In the form of this.
I would.
So I think that's. All right. Good evening, everybody, everyone, and welcome to the Scioto Township Planning Commission meeting for April eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. And with that, we will have roll call.
Abel.
As a.
Moore.
Present.
Gilbertson.
Present.
Hyde.
Present.
Walsh, present, noted that Riser and Rothne are absent.
But we do have quorum. All right, then we'll go to the adoption of the agenda, and I would want to note that we again have our unfinished business that's more internal. We want to entertain a motion to move the unfinished business after the the new business.
I move to amend the agenda to item number seven C to be put before the bylaw seventy.
Is there support for that?
Support.
Support moved by Commissioner Moore and supported by Commissioner Hyde to amend the agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we'll go on. Communications and correspondence. Anyone need note of that? Right, seeing none, we have no presentations, so we'll move ahead and I'll open public comment at seven oh three. We do have a public hearing tonight, so people wishing to address the planning commission on matters which are not on the public hearing portion of the agenda, or seek information on any other matters, please, such oral presentations shall be limited to three minutes, except for representative of a group shall have five minutes. I am, we don't have, I assume you're the applicant? Okay, so we have no other attendees in the township hall. Do we have any attendees online who would like to see? Okay, seeing none, then entertain a motion to close public comment at seven oh four. Commissioner Yable, support by Commissioner Hyde. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and public comment is closed at seven oh four. Moving on to public hearings. All right. We have a public hearing this evening on conditional use number twenty-four zero zero one University Flower Shop Retail Sales in conjunction with a permitted principal use. We will open the public hearing at seven oh four, and the way the a public hearing goes is typically we hear from the applicant, and then members of the planning commission may ask if just factual questions, or and then we move to, in this case, our planning consultant for their review, and then we open it up to the public for public comment, and and it should be said that it's, we don't have to act within the same meeting that we have a public hearing that that's up to the the commission itself. So with that, please introduce yourself and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Charles Graves. I am a co-owner of University Flower Shop and also a longtime Scioto Township resident. Took me four minutes to get here tonight. Happy to be a part of this community. University Flower Shop was founded in nineteen thirty-one in downtown Ann Arbor and has done business ever since then in various Ann Arbor downtown locations, but most recently for many of the last many decades in Nichols Arcade off of State Street. We're really proud to be a core part of our our local community, and we have a very healthy thriving business that comprises walk-in flower orders, online delivery orders, and then events. Our events serve University Michigan as well as many weddings and other local corporate events. We were running out of space in a small event studio that we had in Ann Arbor off Packer near York, and we recently signed a lease as of February first for the space at two twelve South Wagner in Scioto Township. That's twenty-two hundred square feet of space represents about three times more space than we had in our previous event production facility, and we are excited to scale our events business out of that space. When we were looking for a space, one of the things that we were looking for is a space that had the potential additional use of a small retail counter. Our current location in Nichols Arcade is very, very, very quaint. It's a really wonderful place to walk to, but it can be a difficult place to get to if you don't live downtown and aren't used to to frequenting businesses by foot. You have to park in a downtown parking structure that's oftentimes full and walk down into the arcade and and buy flowers that way, and we're only open from ten until five. We feel like there's an opportunity for us to serve a greater portion of public with a small retail presence in our existing event production space on Wagner Road. We understood from the landlord when we were visiting the space that there was the potential for conditional use for up to ten percent of that space for retail, and so we are submitting an application for that purpose. We intend to do a different kind of business than we do in our downtown location. In our downtown location, we make custom-made bouquets, so someone could come in and ask for a very specific type of bouquet, and we'll make it on the spot. Our intention with this conditional use application is to offer pre-made floral arrangements for someone who drives, parks, walks in, wants to buy something, buys it quickly and leaves. We don't want to entertain like a custom bouquet creation in this space. We're doing event production in this space as well, and we're not going to have it staffed to be doing custom creation for people that walk in. So we have the facilities to create bouquets, store them in a cooler in advance, and if someone comes in, we can sell them to them. They can they can walk out with them, or they could order it online to pick up at this location, which would be a much more convenient way for them to do so. This also gives us an opportunity to better serve people on the west side of town and even as far out as Dexter and and Celine from where we're located. And so our plans stipulate that we're looking for a conditional use permit for a hundred and thirty square feet of the twenty-two hundred square feet that we currently have leased at this location. We have plans to to build counters that would prevent customers from going any further into the facility than just those a hundred and thirty square feet, and we we are thankful for your consideration.
Right. Do planning commissioners have any questions of fact or? Then we'll hear from our planning consultants.
Good evening, everybody. Um, Charles did such a great job explaining his his business that I don't have a whole lot more to add. I would just note that this property is owned I One Limited Industrial. It's also part of the Jackson Road overlay district. In our review, we note that it's five point nine percent of the total leased space that he intends to use as retail, which is well below the maximum ten percent that's allowed as a part of the conditional use. In our review, we noted two additional items that required additional information to be supplied, and Charles has supplied both of those items. The handicap parking space is is existing, and he's shown the location and the existing sign as well as how he spoke about how he will contain the customers into that retail area with counter with counter space. I don't have anything else unless you have any specific questions for me.
Planning commissioners, any questions for Laura? Right, then we'll go ahead and open the public comment portion of the public hearing, and again, we have no one attending in township hall. Is there anyone online that has their hand raised?
Are there any people online? Okay.
We do have three people attending online. Great. We couldn't want to be alone. All right, then with that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Abel. Any further discussion? Right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and with that, we're closing the public hearing at right, seven eleven? Commissioners, thoughts on the conditional use?
Well, I am well aware of your establishment in the arcade. I've many years lived in the downtown area, so kudos to you for having your business that long, and I'm very excited to have a flower shop in Scioto, so you're already here, but I mean that I can go and get a bouquet, so I would approve of your application and excited to have you have you in that. Well, I guess servicing the community in that way, so.
Ultimately, very happy with everything we've seen, at least I've seen.
Any other?
I find it quite a good application for your business to be here. Well, supportive.
Does your inside of your establishment look like the arcade?
We're working on it. We we did a a big renovation. It used to be an office building. It didn't look too much different than this, and we ripped up the carpet, polished the concrete floors, ripped up the ceiling, painted the the ceiling and the industrials black, got white walls, and it's a it's, we think that the public will really enjoy visiting that space. We're we're working with our landlord to potentially grow flowers out in front of the building there, and then also to do a a white mural on the side of the building with with floral on the side as well. So we think that we can add some fantastic character to that 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 room.
I just have one free question.
I couldn't tell from the drawings. Are you, is your suite on Wagner Road?
Well, the the entrance is 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 off of Wagner Road, and the building has 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 four suites, and ours is, I guess, the first one that you come to when you pull in the driveway. So it's the side of that building faces Wagner Road, but you know, you have to drive in, I think, about forty feet before you get to the corner.
Well, yeah, I'll just, my my typical thing is Scioto Township did pass a resolution to achieve community-wide carbon neutrality by twenty thirty-five, so I assume with your renovation, you're doing good things like LED lighting and you know, and you know, adding as many energy efficiency things as you can, and obviously, if you can hopefully rip up turf, grass, and grow flowers and some other things, we'd love it. So, yeah, I'm very supportive of of this conditional use. So.
Thirty-five percent.
By twenty thirty-five, yeah.
That is that is a great goal for us to strive for.
So I just, yeah, I know that Laura mentioned in her memo that you wanted a designated handicap parking with a sign, but in looking at your exhibit A, it looks like you already have a designated area.
We do have. I purchased the site and I installed it over the weekend, but yeah, it was it was already designated. It's, there's no there's no step. It's it's a it's a smooth ramp right into the building there, double doors. It'd be very accessible for anyone who wants to access that way, and frankly, there are few places in Ann Arbor less accessible than Nichols Arcade if you're coming by car.
So I would.
Yeah, we do have a model motion.
I can read it.
Yeah.
If you're okay. Okay, so based upon the information received from the applicant and reflected in the minutes of this meeting, the planning commission finds the site plan and related information received by the township needs the required standards and findings for conditional land use and recommends approval. Specifically, as found the following required standards and findings found in section thirty-six dash two-two-four, the zoning ordinance has been demonstrated by the applicant. A will be harmonious and in accordance with the objectives and regulations of the ordinance. B will be compatible with the natural environment existing in future land uses in the vicinity. C that the proposed uses will be served adequately by essential public facilities and services such as highways, streets, police, and fire protection, drainage ways refused to full disposal, or that the persons or agencies responsible for that establishment of the proposed use shall be able to provide adequately any such service. D that the proposed use will not be detrimental, hazardous, or disturbing to the existing or future neighboring uses, persons, property, or the public welfare. E that the proposed use will not create additional requirements at public cost for public facilities and services that will be dealt detrimental to the economic welfare of the community, and F that will be compatible with the town with adopted general development plan.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner Abel. Is there support for the motion?
Support.
Thanks. Or from Commissioner Moore? Further discussion? Roll call. Okay.
We have to note that the applicant has met the handicap parking.
It wa- it is in the upload.
Okay.
There was a response that.
Great.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, roll call votes, please.
Hyde.
Yes.
Abel.
Yes.
Gilbertson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Walsh, yes.
Great, so this, we're a recommending body, so it will go to the board of trustees as well, and then welcome you to Scioto Township. We're looking forward to it.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate your time and questions.
Yeah, thank you. It was, I mean, you you did a thorough job, and that makes it it easy.
This has been one of the fastest actions this county's been in a very long time.
Ever. Feels so good.
It's very important that we do things the right way, and I didn't want to waste anyone's time, including my own, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Look forward to coming over and doing some vlogging.
We look forward to having you.
It's close. I need to get out of the.
Oh, you know what? We actually did the, what's that?
It's close, so if I need to get out of the doghouse, I can make it work.
We'll have a special bouquet for getting out of the doghouse.
Yeah, and you can work with the landlord to have a biker act, too.
Okay.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Take care. All right. Then moving to our unfinished business, the bylaws. And okay, so we did, there was a request to have the red-marked bylaws put in our packet, and they are there. And I I just want to preface this. There were a couple of, I did get an email, and Laura, we can, we can bring Laura back up, too. Just going over a couple of different things with them that we should probably discuss. And then the other thing is, I think it probably appropriate that we have a full planning commission present also, so we may. I I mean, it isn't necessary, but especially if we tweak them again, I I mean, it it's not like we need them tomorrow, but I I'd feel better if, you know, we discuss these issues and then get a clean copy and then have added our next one, but let's go through. I I think it's it's perfectly good to go through these comments, and then I can pull up.
Can I ask you a question while you're doing that? These comments in pink on the right margin, are those from our attorney?
Yes.
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 I like that, firm, yes.
Yes, Kim. And I didn't mess with it.
It was so firm, you didn't need to.
Didn't mean to be firm. I just meant to answer the question.
Yeah. Um, okay, uh, let's see.
I think when we went through these before, we didn't have those responses from the attorney, so.
Yeah, right, it wasn't the. Now, I'll just go and, because the clerk also weighed in on a couple of things that, you know, we looked at, whether or not we wanted to state a firm quorum. It does say that we have seven planning commission members, but we may not, I mean, if someone resigns, we won't have seven. You know what I'm, so I'm thinking, you know, we don't, the quorum, you know, is established by the number of
Members.
of members, so there might be, you know, doesn't, I I don't think we want to have a number of quorum. It it should be established by the number of members.
If you're a majority.
Yeah.
So it says, it says a majority of the members of the commission shall constitute quorum, so I think it should say a majority of the members present. Unless you want to have a bottom line figure.
Yeah, I think it has to be a a majority of, because in order to hold a meeting, you have to have a quorum, so it would be a majority of the members.
Possible attendees, so if I resign, there'll only be six, so a quorum would be four, because that would be more than half.
The the quorum, quorum, excuse, can I, the quorum will always be based on the seven, because you are, so whether the one resigns, you're still a seven-member board, even though there may only be six of you until someone else is appointed, because in your bylaws and in the ordinance, the planning commission is a some seven member.
Interesting.
So so the quorum will always be four.
So as it reads now, a majority of the members of the commission, so.
Are a are a quorum.
That's what you're saying is four.
Is four, so, okay, all right, gotcha. That's good, because I wouldn't have interpreted it that way.
I haven't, no.
Okay. And then.
And what was, what did the clerk?
She said that you should just state that four members is a quorum.
I think that would be clear, yeah. True, I I agree with that. That way, you don't have to think about it anymore.
Okay, I I think that's fine, because I was thinking that it would would determine based on how many people you had, but if it's going to be four all the time, then we should state it four, right?
Un- unless, unless the ordinance is changed and they add additional members. So let's say, for example, the planning commission grew to nine members, then it wouldn't be four anymore, and then you'd have to change these bylaws to to coincide with the ordinance. So leaving it the way you have it, it 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 says that a quorum is established by the majority of the members, regardless of the number of members that are on the planning commission. And you would know that as there's seven of you, you need four to hold a meeting.
Makes sense.
All right.
So I wouldn't see the need to add the number four.
The number four, okay.
Well, I disagree, but I'll vote for it, because I understand the reason for it is that everybody's not so keen on language, but I'm I'm fine with that. You, the bylaws that I see always state the number, so you don't have to remember. Now, how does that work again? But I'm I'm fine with leaving it like you have.
You'd like to see four.
I think it's clear for people, you know?
And then we just have to change it.
You just have to change it, you just amended it.
If the, or if it's.
But I I, I'm happy with how you have it. I understand what Laura was saying. This language.
Yeah, we would have to change it anyway, because it's it's seven.
Nine, we'd have to change it from seven to nine, so we'd have to change it from four to five, so if we had four in there, it wouldn't hurt.
Okay. You know, I've I've, Laura, I changed my mind about it. I think we should just state that four members is the quorum, because we, if we have to go ahead and change the bylaws, if they change it from seven to nine, then we change the bylaws.
See, we can change it.
And that way, there isn't, you you don't have to worry about that interpretation like I was doing incorrectly.
You convinced the two.
Okay, so we will add that. And then there was a suggestion to define abstentions. Mariah came back and she said she didn't think that that was, that was just adding language that we didn't need. I don't know if anyone feels differently.
Is that because it's in the ordinance already? Is that the comments that she made?
It's because conflict of interest is discussed later in these bylaws, and you would abstain when you have a conflict of interest, and so that's, they're tied together.
What page are we on? I'm sorry.
Yeah, was that?
Um, yeah, it it, what this suggestion is to define abstentions in section four point two, and not leave it to later in section eleven point oh, eleven point one. And I don't know if you need it in two different places in the bylaws. My, Mariah didn't think it was necessary.
Okay. I didn't see your comment.
So the the recommendation is to get rid of the language?
No, just keep it as it is.
Yep.
Not to add.
Don't add it.
Don't add the, yeah, because it would be kind of a duplication.
Well, we're on four point two.
Yes.
Um, I know, one, two, three, four. Fifth line down, the very first word on the left-hand end of the column is the word under. And I'm, either I'm not able to read, I'm not able to read the sentence correctly without reading. Is that? No, or something? Well, I thought you had something extra. I don't know that the word under applies.
Yeah, that's kind of a tongue twister.
Unless it's like quoting under some like.
Unless it says amendment under the master.
Or amended to a master.
Can you give a thought on that, Laura?
Um, I'll look back at another version, see if we missed something, but I don't know why that's there either, so.
Okay.
I'll go back and see if we missed a sentence or something in a a version.
Since we're going to wait for all the numbers, probably answered.
Yeah, we can just, if there's something that we need to stick in there or get rid of it, whatever.
Could you go back to page one?
Sure.
Right to the quorum. So I, so this first recommendation by the attorney, that this is in the ordinance, I presume she's saying we don't need to have that in there? Give a point, I'm sorry, section two on page one.
No, she's saying that instead of saying we, the commission shall consist of not less than five nor more than nine members, we should just say it should consist of seven members, because that's what the ordinance says, that the planning commission will consist of seven members.
Okay, yeah. I agree with that. And then down here, what is she saying? So I don't have to.
Um, she's saying that, well, she she omitted that because it, the the terms, the staggering of terms is required by by statute, the Planning Enabling Act, and so she felt that that couple sentences there was was not necessary in the bylaws.
And sometimes we put things in bylaws even though they're in the statute or in ordinance, so I'm wondering, because it's, you got one document to look at, but I'm wondering, she's just saying it's superfluous, it's not in there, you don't need to mention it again, you just better know your statute.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it, I, you're you're already an established commission, and so that's, that's the way the terms should be staggered anyway. I understand that they weren't for a while, and now they are again. Um, so it shouldn't, you know, that's really mentioned in the act for for communities that are establishing a commission so that they stagger the terms. Your terms are already staggered. It's in the act. We're required to to do that. I don't, I I've kind of feel like Mariah, you know, it's kind of just extra stuff in your bylaws.
So I get that, so I'm wondering, just in terms of a working document, would it make sense that just say the seven? Oh, she's getting rid of.
Yeah.
Just starting with the son, and she'll be three years, and not worrying about how we got there in this document. I too wondered why we were taking that out, but.
Yeah. So I'm used to a term of office in the bylaws, but.
Well, it it says you have a term of three years.
Very first sentence that will be left will be.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, yeah, it's just how those terms get.
Thanks, Laura.
Okay. Um, the other thing was, and I just want also to bring it up, is we did specifically add that a tie defeats a motion, and that was, a tie defeats the motion, so before. So before, it, it, we had, we ran into that issue, if there's an, a, a even number of commissioners present. And you have a tie, you literally have to convince one person to change their vote. And either i- i- in order to make a recommendation. So what this said, what this says, yes, and I just wanna say that, um. You know, uh, uh, yeah, so.
This is on four point two.
Yeah, in four point two.
So. Yeah, this is kinda, um. My point is, I've been being redundant here, because I mean, I think these things make it abundantly clear for people coming in and out of the commission. Um, and, uh, I mean, now we will know, cuz we've gone through that experience and had our hands slapped.
Get another one tonight.
And we remember, we looked at the bylaws and we didn't get any more clarity on that, so.
And I ask because in the training, they brought it up at the ZBA that the ZBA, we have five. Even if only three show up and that's a quorum, all three have to say yes, because it's a, the vote is the majority of the ZBA. Is the planning commission the same? So if we have, no.
No, the planning commission is a majority of the members present.
Present, thank you.
Unless it's something like the master plan or some other um, rule of order that requires a two-third majority.
Makes sense, it's our recommending body.
Yeah. Opposed to ZBA, which, yeah. Yeah, no, but that was a good point. Okay, alright.
Does it say that under the? It, it addresses the master.
An affirmative vote of the majority of the commission members present at the time of a vote shall be required except for the. For their approval, any request to action or motion placed. Except an affirmative vote of not less than the majority of the members required for approval, master plan or amendments, master plan.
Um, and then there, um, a correction, article five J. Um, should be removed or noted that the capital improvement plan is prepared by the township board. Because in some jurisdictions, the planning commission has that, it, it is not a part of our. Uh, that the, uh, BOT does that, retains that, so, um, but I agree that we should be, we should be. Clear that the capital, uh, e- either remove it or state that it is prepared by the town, by the Board of Trustees.
You're looking at number A?
Yeah, talking about that in our training, how some communities.
Yeah, and this would just make it very clear that it isn't a part of, um, because I, I, I got panicked. We haven't done this, what, yeah. So thoughts?
So I understand what you're saying, it's not in the ordinance, but we wanna put this in here.
Oh, oh, no, it is, it is retained, that power is retained by the Board of Trustees in Scioto Township, so. Yeah, so we would, and this is saying that it is, so we need to either remove J or. Note that the capital improvement plan is prepared by the township board.
It was conditional, if they don't tell us to do it, it's not ours.
It's not ours.
So this says what.
I mean, they could change it, I guess they could change it, but.
By delegating.
You could say as of, in insert, April first, twenty twenty-four, or whatever day you want. This has been retained by the Scioto Township Board of Trustees.
Is, can I ask, is, is, right now in the ordinance, does it say that we're supposed to do this?
It's not in the ordinance, it's in the state act, and this is the exact language from the state act that. Um, a planning commission, part of your duties is to prepare a capital improvements plan if instructed by the township board. And what Jan is saying is the township board retains that authority, and so this either needs to be completely stricken. Or we need to somehow, I mean, I, I think it, I honestly think it's fine, because you haven't been instructed by the township board. But just to make it clear that the board has retained this, um, this duty to themselves. You know, to conduct the capital improvement plan.
Uh, well, we could also reverse it and just say the capital improvement plan is prepared by the township board. Um, uh, uh, unless, it, it, yeah, so that it would make it. As opposed to, yeah, you better ask if you need to do this.
So, and just through the question, Laura, number A about preparing, amending, et cetera, of a master plan. Is the. So we're to revise, prepare, amend. But the township board gets the final say.
Only if they have adopted a resolution saying they want final say.
And what says, and where does it say that, in the act and enable, in the?
In the, yes, in the Planning Enabling Act.
So last time, we amended our plant, master plan. We sent it over for final approval to the township board. And they failed to act, saying, we'll go along with, essentially, we'll go along with what you did, your vote. They did, I don't know that there was a resolution.
I don't know that it went to them, I don't know that there is a resolu, I mean, I don't know.
It did go to them, because we finished, we approved, and we sent it on.
I think they did not put it on their agenda.
And the word that came back is, you know what, we're fine with what you decided. But that's not, that's not according to the statute.
No, these, you would have to have a resolution for them to take the authority.
Yes.
We have the authority unless they take it.
Yes, the planning commission has the authority to.
I was, I was, I thought that we were a recommending body, we did the work, we approved what we did. Or not, and then it goes to final approval to the board, apparently I'm all wrong about that.
Except for that.
Pardon?
This is an exception.
And, and that's why it also.
I thought that's how the master plan was supposed to go, because if you recall, we were all surprised. Cuz we thought they were, they had to flag say.
They acted like they were going to take it.
Anyway, so you're saying that the, the statute says that they only approve it. If they notify us by resolution that they're gonna make the final say?
Yes.
That the board has to do a resolution?
Yes.
Okay, right, right, and I'm saying that, I never saw a resolution on that. That's why I'm saying that the statute was not followed to the letter of the law, but anyway, okay.
Well, it, it, it was, because they only would provide a resolution if they wanted to review it. And if they, if a body, if a legislative body doesn't, then they're giving the planning commission the authority to approve the master plan without. Without, um, it moving to the, the township board, it happens in a lot of my communities.
Okay, so the res, the resolution is not to take it and approve it, but rather. What's the re, the resolution is, is to say?
It's to say, it's just to say the township board wants to authorize adoption of the master plan. Cuz otherwise, they don't, they don't have, the, the, the planning act gives the planning commission that authority. And from, I guess I'll word Smith J, um, sorry, to. Can you still hear me? Sorry, I don't know what happened, um, I'll word Smith J to, um, modify. That a CIP is, the CIP is conducted by the board unless, um, instructed, authorized. Um, by the planning commission, I'll wordsmith it a little bit just to swi, swap it around.
Yeah, the, well, that the, unless the township board, yeah, um, directs the planning commission.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then the other, the other one suggestion was. Do we wanna have the same language that the Board of Trustees has about hybrid meetings?
Where are we at?
Sorry, that's.
Six point five.
Yes. In this case, it would read, um, if we were to change it, this is, um, a kind of a hybrid of what is currently here. And then what the board has in their, in their, um, ru, rules of order. It, section six point five would say, um, remote meeting procedures. And then it would say hybrid in-person and remote meeting particip, participation. Will be held by the planning commission in accordance with township policy. However, if remote participation is unavailable due to technical difficulties. The planning commission may proceed with any meeting lawfully noticed under the Open Meetings Act.
So you're gonna rewrite that?
I was gonna say, that's the proposed language, cuz that's what's on the page right now.
Right, that's, that's the language that the, um, Board of Trustees has, and the thought was to make it.
Yeah, makes sense.
Similar. And I think that makes, it makes sense then. And then the, the six point four was just to make it clear that we have the authority to cancel meetings.
Skipping down to the next section, we're just redlining section eight. What do you think about Mariah's comments specifically regarding the five minutes? As a section eight, speaking limitations.
Eight point zero.
About, oh, the five minutes? You know, that's really standard in a, a, a lot of jurisdictions.
Yeah, we, yeah.
I mean.
I noticed that.
Yeah, it, it, just going to different boards and so forth, it's, it's.
But she's saying it's not allowed.
No, that was.
She, she says above a person addressing the commission in their individual capacity, oh, sorry, uh. To provide their address, that's what she's.
You can't, you, it's not allowed to. Right, that's what she's commenting there.
I see.
Words, should be a person addressing the commission, they didn't cross. In there, didn't get crossed out.
Oh.
It really should be a person addressing, the commission shall have three minutes. Right?
There needs to be crossed out.
In there.
In there.
In there, has to be crossed out.
So. This is the attorney's cross out of this language.
Right, so we would, I guess, you know, I would be in favor of retaining five minutes for an organization.
I'm fine with that, we hardly have that come up, so it's not like it's gonna make all of our meetings last until midnight, so.
And it also kind of promotes people.
Putting a group leader.
Yeah.
Rather than everybody stand up and say their three minutes.
Okay. Any?
That's what I think, but that.
Okay, so then we're saying, let's keep that in there, the five minutes.
Yeah, just the adoption of the agenda in the next item down, that makes sense.
With that, we don't have the adoption of the agenda in the, in our agenda.
Or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
We do now. It wasn't in the sample copy.
Yeah. Now, there was a suggestion to move the approval of the minutes up, um. Um, after the first public comment. I. The only reason you'd do that is if you were worried that, you know, somebody would leave and you'd lose quorum. But you could, if that was the case, you could change the agenda. I'd rather deal with the minutes where the public isn't engaged necessarily at the end of the meeting.
I would just note that the clerk, um, she indicated, her reason for that suggestion was. One, to have the meetings after public comment, in, in case the public has a comment on your minutes, which I s. You know, I said, well, we have two public comments before we currently approve the minutes. But then, but then she also said that, um, if there were something that was on the last meeting. Um, that you were doing something else on this meeting, let's say you had a conditional use last meeting. And the site plan came right back at the following meeting, or, or, let's say. And something in the minutes was incorrect, and you've already approved the site plan earlier in the meeting. Um, and then you get to the minutes, and you're like, wait, that's not what we meant to do in, in, in our motion, or, you know, there, that, that, that's the only other. Time there might be an issue, I don't think that's ever come up, ever. Um, but, made a good point, um, so that's the only other reason to consider maybe moving it up a little bit in the agenda.
I don't know if you know this, but the Board of Trustees' agendas, do they have approval of the minutes? Uh, moved up to the beginning?
They do.
And just to be consistent, is why I, I think I said that too, but. It isn't critical that we all be the same, but. Doesn't hurt to be up there.
And, uh, well, uh, uh, you know, it's just, it, we don't tend to trouble.
It would help today if it were, um. Discussed.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just thinking, wow, I just don't have an opinion on this, whatever you guys want, but then it occurred to me, sometimes we have long. Uh, uh, in-depth, uh, projects that come to us, and then we're like. I don't know about you, but I'm ready to go home, I'm tired, I'm finished, I'm depleted, and then we go, oh yeah, we gotta get the minutes. So in that regard, um, maybe they should be up there, get the easy stuff out of the way.
It's like it's all business.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I don't have a problem, so we, we'll make, move, um, approval of the minutes to right after the first public co. Uh, right after the first public comment.
Oh, right after, oh, okay.
I think that, yeah, just, that allows, if there is.
It's right after first public comment.
Then, then we're somewhat consistent.
Okay.
Okay.
I like this business session part, because. Um, I just think it, um, it pulls it all together there, public hearings, unfinished business. And new business, so I like, I like the way that's laid out. And I'm glad to see that.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, so then we'll just, uh, we'll, uh, I think we should probably do a final markup and then, uh, a, a clean copy, so. Um, cuz sometimes it's easier to read that clean copy. Um, or, and that will have to go out Monday for the next meeting, we need the subtitles, okay? Alright. And we'll move on to, um, reports. OHM, um, I, OHM does a good job, they check in and say, do you think we need, you know, we need to attend the meeting when they don't. Have a review comment, so they're not here tonight, uh, Laura, did you?
Oh, you're on our agenda now?
Yeah, sorry. Sorry, I, I wrapped up, yes.
So, um, I guess my report for the next meeting, um, we will have the Trailwoods, uh, road realignment, public hearing. For the major PUD amendment. Um, that's the only thing I think that's on, um, the next meeting, um, we're continuing. The Trailwoods Road Realignment, um, they had a presentation, I think, uh, the few meetings ago. Um, a public hearing is scheduled for your next meeting. It's week, or later this month, I guess, um, Crossroads has requested, uh, um, to meet with staff. Um, and go over their resubmital before they formally, um, d- submit their plans for review, so. That's gonna be coming, uh, back. Um, we're reviewing several administrative site plans right now, but nothing, um, nothing, nothing. That will come to the board, uh, before Trailwoods, so I'm happy to answer any questions or if you have any comments.
Yeah, and then it, uh, Laura, it looked like we would do the, not, 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 in, in four weeks, we would do, we'd have the solar.
Discussion.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, like, like, I don't have anything for May sixth yet, so that's my goal. You know, would be to um start that discussion back up, have something else for you to review.
Right, um, I don't have um. Anything to report other than uh E S T F uh did have a meeting and um we're working on. The um, uh, plant, the June first planting, and then the mine, my. Uh, Michigan Green Communities, we reviewed their uh, e- either different levels that you achieve, and we have a. A small group working on, um, we kind of together discussed, um, it, it's completing. It's online action steps, so one of the action steps under energy is to benchmark your township facilities. We've completed that, and so it's an online form, it's not started, in process, completed. So, um, we're going through that, and it, um, just our, the first blush was, will at least be a bronze level, and. The idea of doing bronze, silver, and I forget what the last one is, gold, I think. Is at, at a certain level, you get like a fellow from um. The Graham Institute for a summer to work on a project. Um, and then you get invited to certain events where you share best practices and so forth, and so. The, that's sort of the, eh, um, I don't know if you, reward for as you move up. You get more, kind of more support and um dialogue around the, uh, you know, sustainability. It's all in support of the um, my healthy climate plan and uh sustainability strategies. And one of the things, I think this is helpful, um, because we um didn't really stress it that much. I know we talked about health and wellness when we put together the um sustainability plan and climate action plan. But they had a whole section on health, and evidently there's a training that staff can go through too, to look, put health. In, into your policymaking and so forth, so, I, I mean, that's, I, I learned something from, you know, just. Going through that process, and so I think we'll probably come back, you know, after we go through this and, and look at what some of the other. Um, jurisdictions have done around health, and maybe we can make some recommendations.
Perhaps revise the plan that was submitted to the board.
Right, and add, and, and some of the health features. Eh, everything else, it seems like, you know, we cover in a, a line pretty well, but that was like, oh, whoa. Um, yeah, and I think they also had some pretty um specific ideas about um equity and social justice too. And, you know, we had a, y- you know, we talked about that and we included it in some of the writing, but there wasn't. You know, some, uh, some specific strategies around, yeah, so. Um, so health and, and social justice piece kind of came out of that, so that, um. And um I did get an email, um, we are confirmed um for October sixth. For the Sustainability Fair at Meyer, and they're gonna give us the section of parking lot that's off of the garden wing. Which will be really nice, because then if people are, you know, trying EVs or the EV bikes. Um, we'll have some of the EV cars there, you know, some of the other equipment, it's not like in the main parking lot. Um, which is good for safety, but it also means we'll probably need to put up some signs to direct people, but we're gonna have a thirty by forty tent, so people are gonna be curious.
Plus, there is a through, you gotta remember, there is a through drive.
Right before that.
That goes right alongside the garden, well, it's separated by some spaces, but we just have to be aware.
Yep.
That people use that.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
We'll have to be careful of that.
They bypass, they go to the other entrance exit.
Oh.
To avoid the light.
To avoid the light. To avoid the light.
I gotcha. Okay, thank you, good to know, we'll have to say, uh, uh, one week over there to figure out where we're gonna be the tent stuff, we'll think about that.
But, but safety wise, it's better than being in the main part.
I wouldn't want anyone to get hit trying to have an EV bike. Bike, an e-bike, I should say, okay, um, let's see, um. John did not um give us a board of trustees' report, um, I do know tomorrow night, the transportation. Um, committee is giving its recommendations to the board, um. And the tree fund policy is still under, um, in the attorney's, um, purview. Um, oh, also tomorrow night, the um, that, the um, theater Goodrich, it's on the agenda again.
Oh, yes.
Okay, C B A.
We have an agenda item for the eighteenth, it's a land division on Joy Road. Looking for a width of eighty-seven feet versus a hundred and fifty feet requirement, that's all I know at this point.
Okay. D D A?
Did that earlier today?
Oh.
Oh, exciting, um. The road commission has been, you've driven on Jackson Road the last several days, they have these nice large signs that say they're having a Zoom meeting, I think on Thursday? If I remember the date correctly, uh. The D D A, the, so the road commission was able to come up with six hundred thousand dollars of. Village funding, four hundred thousand hours of money from the Michigan Transportation Fund, which they only get like twenty-six hundred hours per road mile. Per year to do any work on county roads or connector roads. Uh, so they came up with a billion dollars, they asked the D D A for half a billion dollars, and they are going to repave the. Westbound lanes of Jackson Road from Jackson Industrial Drive where Sam Hill basically is. Headed west down to Myrtle, which is right down by, just past Shared House.
Wow.
Uh, but that'll be only the westbound lanes of the north side of Jackson Road, the southbound side will. Be its own project at some future point in time, uh. So that, that was something, uh, we also did discuss briefly, it was decided to table it till our meeting next month, uh, a regular meeting. Township Hall Park slash Parks and Folks have asked for funding. Isn't entirely clear exactly how much and or for what specific project. There's discussion about the restrooms again, and there's questions about who's going to lock them, who's gonna maintain them, who's going to do a lot of the things that come along with that. Uh, but also potentially making a sports soccer field of some sort back at that property, so.
What property?
Uh, Township Hall Park, right behind here.
Oh.
Yeah, would that be in lieu of the Flyers Field?
So that was another, there's, there's about eighteen different layers to that onion, uh, there's the Flyers, there's. Apparently, the township occasionally has some agreement with some people from U of M to fly drones there, I, I. There's all sorts of things that apparently flying drones in, in Irving is illegal. Didn't know that till today, I don't know if that's even true, but.
Oh, cuz they have, yeah, where they have the robotics on, on, up on North Campus, they have that netted area that they fly them in.
So if you're in a certain distance, I think, in a port, you have to have like FAA permission to fly the drones, planes and drones don't mix. Uh, so there, there was a lot of, there's a lot more to be understood before, but I think the D D A will come up with. What funding we have available for whatever things come, come to be.
Right, um, I forgot one thing in my report, um, and that is the, that SEMCOG released the grant, the planning grant. Um, and so I think it's, so far it's Gillian Carey, um, Chris Chang. Um, we probably should have somebody from the D D A, uh, if, if you're interested, Ryan. Um, it's due the twenty-fourth of May, so we have to turn it over relatively quickly. Um, and we're still grappling with the time to meet, um, but I can send you, if you're interested in that, I can send you some information on. What are the grants, and then I don't, and Kim, I don't know if you're interested in, in being on that or not. Maybe we'll do the, we'll, we'll save that transportation committee, education committee for you. We'll keep you out of the, we, and our, um, Elizabeth Laporte, who's our, um. Uh, volunteer grant writer is, has also volunteered to help.
And what is that grant planning for, planning for what?
That would be um doing, as, we have to define the scope, but it would be multimodal transportation study for the Jackson Road corridor. Um, and, yeah, so what do we do, you know, eh, um, to make it more multimodal, and it is. Eh, you know, Michelle Ford brought up at our transportation, uh, our J-Rod um meeting. Even it's a, it's a principal arterial road, and those roads are responsible for about sixty-nine percent of the pedestrian fatalities. Across the nation, and so we don't wanna be one of those.
That was one other thing that, that came out, that meeting that was really interesting is. We start off down basically at Baker at about fourteen thousand cars a day, and by the time we get over to Wagner. Cause you're headed this direction, as you're headed towards Ann Arbor East, there are twenty-three thousand cars a day.
Twenty-two, wasn't it?
Or twenty-two.
Twenty-two, and the capacity of Jackson Road is about thirty thousand.
Yeah, that was just interesting for us to know, since everybody was there.
Elizabeth told me she was working with you then.
Oh, you know. Yeah, okay, um, and then we don't ha- have anyone on the road advisory committee right now.
And we probably won't.
And Riser, right, cuz. Um, anything from here in River Watership Council? Okay, I gave the E S T F, uh, W two reg.
So, um. I guess, uh, Lima Township finally agreed to a four twenty-five agreement with Chelsea. City to develop some of their land. Um, and I think it's supposed to be like a thirty-year.
Agreement split of tax revenues, interesting.
So, did I just hear, no, uh, what is, what was the agreement?
A four tw- four twenty-five agreement between Lima Township and City of Chelsea.
That has to do with the.
Annexation.
Yeah, the boundary of the city.
To be able to put housing on that.
Okay.
I kinda wanted, I mentioned this to Jan, um, the mayor, Jane Pacchio, she was talking about. We do a roundtable, so everybody talks about what's going on in their, in their area, um. They were granted, uh, they wanted a million for fire, uh, um, procurement. Um, vehicles, whatever, um, and they got five hundred thousand. So that might be something that we wanna kind of pay attention to, uh.
I can speak to that a little bit. Uh, I actually sent the email, probably is in February, to Felicia Brabec. And the chief reached out to a bunch of community members, encouraging them to contact their, you know, elected officials. Felicia called me the next day, actually twice within two days. Which spurred a bunch of meetings with the township, it sounds like there might be between a million and a million and a half dollars coming to Zayo Township.
Oh, great, because I was like.
I can't promise that's happening, but that's what it's, it's formally sounded like from the state.
That's promising, because one, sometimes, um, the representative of Debbie Dingle comes to our meetings. And she's like supposedly in touch with uh our supervisor and. Jane, the mayor of City's, uh, Si- I'm sorry, Chelsea is obviously involved with them, and they stay on top of. What is being appropriated out of the house, there's a pocket of money that comes out of the house, a pocket of money that comes out of the senate. Little different rules.
Apparently, February and March is the time to go seeking funds from the state government each year.
Well, some of it, and then some of it, we get a, a heads up, or they've been getting a heads up on what type of things are fruitful, what, what type of things. Will fly, so, um, um, I just put that, so that's good to hear.
Yeah.
Cause I'm like.
The more you work with, the more you work with, like, one of the ways they sold style getting some money is. It looks like it'll be for equipment, it'll look like it'll be for equipment that'll benefit Chelsea and Dexter. And the neighboring community, so it's not just a, well, if the money goes to Sio, it benefits the product.
Hmm, yeah, the, yeah, that's, and then, of course, we, I've learned this earlier, just from ways of, a lot of senior things. Are, are popular, senior pride that involves seniors are popular, um. Another thing the City of Chelsea's working on is, I guess they had a pocket of money. Um, and they kind of held on to it, they, to deal with mental health issues, there was a lot of discussion. At our mea- at several meetings about how Western Washington County kind of gets left out of the picture on, on. A lot of levels, so in regard to Watts, a Washington Transportation Study, um, as well as this, uh. Uh, dollars with regard to, uh, the mental health village that passed. So one of the things they're doing is, I guess some locales are using the money to have a higher social worker that goes out on runs with police. They're more focused on having a, a, a social worker where teens or adults can go in and talk to. And this is part of their goal, they've been in touch with the, the county commissioners about. Keeping, they wanna keep their district court, cause that was identified as something that perhaps would close out in Chelsea, but they wanna keep that, but also. Have the, the county build a service center out there, where people don't have to travel all the way downtown. To do registered deeds, whatever, I don't know what all the offices would be staffed out there, but, um, so that's part and parcel of it too. Uh, I updated them about our um transit village work, uh, group, and, um. And about, I've been talking about what we were toying around with, or talking about, how it changes on Jackson Road. Um, so I, you know, we're gonna, we had our first meeting with that, um, and updated them about the Miller Z roundabout, um. Yeah, I guess the, in the House, they call it the community project funding, and in the Senate, they call it the congressional direct spending.
Okay.
So.
Well, thank you, it, it's nice to be able to spend a little bit more time on reports, and I'm so late. Right, anyone else have anything on, on reports, okay? Um, yeah, so we have our, our minutes, and Laura, do you wanna, um, oh, no, we, we, public comment first, sorry. Um, we have no one here, any township hall, is there anyone on the line that would like to raise their hand for. To speak at our final public comment? Um, I forgot the opening, but I opened it at eight oh nine. Alright, um, and seeing none, um, their motion to close public comment from Commissioner Hyde. Supported by Commissioner Gable, I, uh, any, any further dissection, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, alright, uh, public comment is posted eight oh nine. Alright, then, moving to the minutes, um, Laura, do you wanna, um. Before we approve the minutes, I wanted to have a little discussion, because, um, we have a, 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 a. An educational moment, right, which we call with kids, I think, something like that, so we have an educational mo- a moment around. Um, at, at the, one of the, the motion that we had with the conditional zoning.
So, uh, so the, the motion was made adding a condition that you discussed. With the applicant, um, that evening regarding hours of operation. However, a conditional rezoning by law has to have the. Conditions brought forth voluntarily by the applicant, which it sounds like he agreed with. However, because he didn't provide that app, that, um, those hours of operation in his application. It really shouldn't have happened that the planning commission would add it at this point. Um, so, in talking with Mariah, and, and in addition to that, just, um, this particular use will be a conditional use. And will come back before you, and during the conditional use. And will come back before you, and during the conditional use discussion, that's when it would be appropriate to add. Hours of operation or um, other business operation type conditions um, at that time. So, when discussing with Mariah the minutes before you, um, her and I agree. You should not change the motion that was made. Um, that's the record of what occurred at the meeting. So, um, we, we, so you should approve the minutes, but as part of that motion. You should make some clarity about that additional condition that was placed. Um, and that, you know, just in this meeting, so in this meeting, you're talking about, you know, you approve the minutes. But you understand that that shouldn't have happened, um, and if this, this will come back for conditional, uh, conditional use time. Or the applicant could between now and the time when it goes to the Board of Trustees, decide he wants to add that condition. Um, but at the Board of Trustees, we really shouldn't, shouldn't add it, uh, and without him saying. Giving us something in writing saying, um, yes, this is a condition of, that I'm willing to provide for this conditional use. Does it, does that all make sense? Or conditional rezoning? See, I'm talking, I'm talking and I'm interchanging them, so, sorry, I hope I didn't confuse.
A question, alright, did you just say we should approve it as is, and in tonight's meeting minutes? We should include a discussion about what it should have been, so. Do you think we should add it to the minutes of the meeting that we didn't discuss it in?
No, I think you should approve the minutes and as an, as part of the approval of the minutes. Have a statement that says, in approving these minutes, we understand that condition four. Under the Brussel conditional rezoning, um, is an item added by the Planning Commission. Um, and not voluntarily offered by the applicant.
So the Board of Trustees should recognize that it is not part of their motion.
Correct. And they won't, because I write, I'll write their model motion.
Unless the applicant voluntarily adds it.
Unless he asks, yes, unless the applicant comes back and says, I'm fine with it, I want to add it to this application, I'm going to ask for that in writing. So that he is telling us that's a condition he's placing upon himself, that's what a conditional rezoning is. He's placing the conditions upon himself that you are then reviewing and recommending to the board and that they are approved.
That's not going before the board tomorrow night, is it?
It is not.
Okay.
Good?
Good. Are there, uh, I move, yes, um.
Approval of the minutes of uh, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. And with the explanation or clarification that uh, the motion that was made on the. Marzel. Uh, application, the motion that was made at the March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting was. Should not have included as a condition of the rezoning, um, anything related to hours of service.
I would just say that our, that it it's item four, four, should not have included uh, uh, item four.
That item four should not have included, should not have been included in the motion.
Because it was not voluntarily.
Offered by the.
Offered by the applicant.
Because it was not voluntarily offered by the applicant.
I would support that.
Okay. Moved in by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Hyde, further discussion on the minutes. Alright, um, uh, let's do a roll call vote, just because it's a specific one.
Yeapole.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Hyde, yes, Walsh, yes.
Yes, right, minutes are approved with the note. Right, um, any other business to come before the Planning Commission?
Move for adjournment?
Moved by Commissioner Hyde, supported by Commissioner Yeapole to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Alright.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at eight sixteen. And thank you, I forgot to introduce you to folks, oh, rat.